I would like to call the Committee of the Whole Building Planning, Zoning and Public Works Meeting of January 10th, 2022 to order. I'll call the roll. Brereton?
Here.
Flurry?
Here.
Frank?
Here.
Freeman?
Here.
McGee?
Here.
Mulholland?
Here.
Porter?
Here.
Prather?
Here.
Snow?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Ten present. Mayor Morris is not feeling well and will not be here tonight. At this time, we will need a motion to appoint a temporary chair.
There's a motion by Alderman Prather to appoint Dan Snow as the acting chair of the meeting as their second. Alderman Stevens enthusiastically provides a second. Any discussion or comment?
We'll take roll call. Brereton?
No.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mulholland?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Thanks. Good evening, everybody. At this point, we'll address public comment. I believe we had somebody, or no?
No, we do not.
Nope, okay. Public forum, we have none. And next is report from officers, boards and special committees. Nikor, next site presentation?
And Alderman Snow, that will not be going forward this evening because, one, we didn't have the Zoom all set up, and two, Alderman Morris is not present. But Wendy Frank would like to address the council during this time.
Go ahead, Ms. Frank.
Thank you. I just had a constituent call today about the ice and the snow on sidewalk and whether we had an ordinance, and I explained that we did not. But he said he would like, if anybody was listening on the TV, that bus stops especially should be shuffled and de-ice for the kids that are waiting for the bus. And I said that I would relay that. So that's what I wanted to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Obviously, the public works will, are at the meeting and will possibly address that as needed. Next, we're on to number two, public works new business, public works department update. Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, sir. Couple of things to update council on. Our parking lot seven expansion project has been submitted for the rebuild downtowns and main streets capital grant program. The expected award of those grants is May 1st, so hopefully we'll be successful with that. And the factory updates to our thickening centrifuge at the wastewater treatment plant have been completed by Centrisys, and that unit is back online. As you may recall, the estimated cost of the updates range from $36,000 to $80,500, and the final cost came in at $69,809.24. So that work has been completed and it's back up and online and functioning. That's all I got for updates.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. And then next is yours with the, oh, excuse me, go ahead, sorry.
Thanks, Dan. So Brent, that parking lot number seven, are we still contemplating electric charging stations for that? Is that still on the table?
Yes, that was included in our application. It was a parking lot expansion. It includes some amenities along the riverfront, canoe launch, a boat dock. It will create probably add an additional 64, 65 parking stalls, four of which will be the EV charging stations proposed. It will also have a downtown located changeable message sign. With the reorientation of that area, it will allow us enough room to put a sign, message sign down there for, on behalf of the citizens, and as well as other amenities. So hopefully, it'll be successful.
Thank you.
Mr. Anderson, question. Somebody had asked me about the large limestone blocks down toward the river edge area. What's up with those?
Those were there, those came, those are part of the foundation from the Leith property, the old National Sewing Machine Factory. So we are going to use those as we terrace and stair step the riverbank there for the improvements. We'll utilize those found at limestone rocks.
Great, thanks. Anybody else? Now we're back to number two, branch grinding.
Branch grinding. Memo in your packets, our branch pile has gotten to the point that we need to have it reduced. The current budget includes $12,000 for leaf and branch pickup. We have received two bids for the grinding and removing of that pile. I would recommend approval of the low bid from Landscape Material Firewood Sales in the amount of $9,000 for grinding of the city's branch pile. The work will be paid for from line item 015-310-6826.
We would entertain a motion for that, for discussion. Alderman Flurry, second by Porter. Any discussions, questions, comments?
I'll add that most, the majority of this mulch will be, will be shipped off-site and reused. A portion of that will remain and will continue to fill our bin at the street department and make it available for the public to utilize.
Excellent. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Then the Irene Road realignment project.
We're going to defer this item to a future meeting. When this was put on the agenda, there's been some ongoing discussions regarding this project, and it was felt that those discussions would be wrapped up by now, and they are still ongoing. So once those discussions conclude, then we'll bring this back for committee's contemplation.
Thank you. Next, bridge conditioning report.
Again, in your packets, Hampton and Zine Rhenwick, who are, who is our IDOT approved bridge manager, has completed our biannual bridge inspections. And three of our bridges has gotten to the point in their lifecycle that a bridge condition report is warranted. The bridge condition report determines the scope of improvements to rehabilitate the reported structural, scour, hydraulic and geometric deficiencies of each structure. Each report will provide planning level, project alternates, cost estimates and recommendations. It's the first phase of the rehab or replacement of those structures. We have received a proposal from HLR in the amount of $15,500 to complete a bridge condition report for each of the following bridges, and that would be Main Street, Appleton Road South and Appleton Road North. I would recommend approval of the proposal from Hampton, Lenzine and Rhenwick in the amount of $15,500 to complete the three bridge condition reports. This work will be paid for from MFT funds. And you'll notice on the agenda, there's three resolutions to follow, and those are required because of the utilization of MFT funds, and each bridge has to have its own section number going forward. That's why there's three separate ones and not just one.
We would entertain a motion to that effect? Ms. Prather, second by Mr. Stevens. And to simplify things, could we actually do an ominous motion to do number D, E, F and G if they're all pertaining to the same thing and their boilerplate topic? Or you don't want to do them separate?
I would keep them separate. Yeah, legally could do it combined, but I don't know. I don't know if there's any different questions on different ones as we go forward, so.
Ms. Freeman?
Thank you, Chairman Snow. So Brent, when the, the bridge inspections were done, they don't tell us what repairs are needed, or we have to go, like, they do an inspection and then say these bridges are going to need repairs, but you have to hire somebody else to tell you what repairs are needed? Is that what this is?
Well, so the inspection was done and it notes things, what you can see from the surface and what you see on the reports. And then when you do the bridge condition report, you go back to the original plans. You'll look and see if there's any testing to do. For example, when we did the State Street Bridge. When it got to the point, based on your visual inspection of the, and it got to the point that further review was warranted, the bridge condition report was done, and the result of that report said that we could reuse the piers. We had to recap the piers, but we could reuse the piers. We didn't need to remove the piers and reinstall the piers. So it basically gives you the blueprint or the outline of what you're going to follow and how you're going to rehabilitate the bridge. So each one of these bridges will probably not be all done the same. Some of the, with the current conditions on each of the bridges, they're all to a different point in their lifecycle, and you may be able to get by with just a re, a redo of the surface, like a hydro jet perhaps, like they did on the Appleton Road Bridge, as opposed to a complete removal and replacement. Or they could say you could remove the superstructure, save the substructure and just replace the superstructure. So there's many different alternatives for a bridge rehabilitation, and this plan gets into it full depth. Whereas your inspection doesn't do that, your inspection just tells you as, as a guide to start with that it's in a good shape, it's not in good shape, it's to the point now where you need to look at it further, and that further is the bridge condition report.
Go ahead, Ms. Freeman.
So we don't, we don't use the Army Corps of Engineers for our bridges at all?
No, not for bridges. It's out through IDOT.
Anybody else have any more questions? That being said, we'll, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now we're on to E.
So again, each bridge needs a resolution to expend the funds. So I've, I've made this initial resolution at $6,000. As we go forward through this project, and this could be, this could be one year, two year, 10 year, five years, it could be a long time, but it'll, it'll reflect back to the section number. We might have to do additional resolutions as the remedy and the repairs are identified and we move forward on each one of the bridges individually. To start with, the total cost was 15,500, so I just rounded it to 6,000 each for each bridge.
So we would entertain a motion for E, resolution to improve the under, the highway code for preparation for bridge condition report on Main Street. Alderman Stevens, second by Prather. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And we have number F. We can just go ahead. And F, resolution to improve the under highway code for preparation for the Appleton Road North. Motion to that effect? Mr. Porter, second by Mr. McGee. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. G, resolution for improvement under the highway code for preparation of the bridge conditioning report for Appleton Road South. Entertain a motion to that effect? Mister, excuse me, Ms. Mulholland, second by Mr. McGee. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. G, resolution for improvement under the highway code for preparation of the bridge conditioning report for Appleton Road South. Entertain a motion to that effect? Mister, excuse me, Ms. Mulholland, second by Mr. McGee. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And now we're on to H, certificate of satisfaction, completion of plat one and two of Sager Corporate Park.
Thank you. Again, memo in your packet, the public improvements required for plat one and plat two Sager Corporate Park have been completed, with the exception of some of the sidewalks, some of the sidewalks in, some of the sidewalks are not in. The developer has submitted his engineer certification, the as-built construction plans and the contractor's affidavit and lien waivers as required. The property owner has posted a separate surety in the amount of $145,600 for the remaining sidewalk, and the property owner's surety shall be in full force and effect until the required sidewalks are completed. Therefore, I would recommend that City Council approve a resolution accepting the public improvements that have been completed for plat number one and plat number two of Sager Corporate Park. And if you drive out there now, you can see that it's nicely lit finally at nighttime as they finally got the street light system installed out there, so.
Okay, we would entertain a motion to, for further discussion? Mr. Porter, and second by Ms. Freeman. Any discussion? And I guess I, Ms. Freeman, go ahead.
So Brent, is this Magna?
That would be included, yes.
So I thought Magna had completed all of their improvements, but they were going to do a bigger parking lot so people didn't have to park on the streets out there?
They, well, this isn't, this isn't Magna, this is Sager One, Sager Two incorporates portions of where Magna is located, but not Magna specifically. But Magna has done parking lot improvements out there in addition to what they had originally planned.
Okay, so they did do that on parking lot?
Yes, that, that has been completed.
So this is like the Speedway out there?
This is basically all the remaining undeveloped property for one and two, including Speedway. It includes Jack Peace, the part that Jack Peace bought, which was Sager Plat Five that came before you. So the majority, the KB Farms was the developer of this project, and they have now sold the property. So the new owner of the property is the one who has submitted the letter of credit for the remaining sidewalks. But all of the Sager Five sidewalks have been installed.
So they won't technically do all the rest of the sidewalks until that's developed, though, right?
That's typically what happens in the industrial parks, yes.
And Brent, if you don't mind me asking, how much money is being released? I'm assuming there's money that's being released, or do you have that?
I don't have that value in front of me. I want to say it was probably, right now, it's probably in the $600,000, $700,000, because I don't think they took their final reduction, so that would be my guess, but it's just a guess.
And if for some reason the $145,000 doesn't cover, that's just money that's put aside in the same fashion, but if it were to run $200,000, they would still be on the hook to accomplish that mission?
Correct. We have requirements in our code that before you can get an AC permit for a, for a structure for a new development, it has to have the sidewalks installed. So it's, it's, it's an additional layer of protection for the city.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions or comments from the council? Okay, that being said, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And then we have a resolution authorizing the execution of the letter of credit, Midland Bank and guarantee payment of, to Philadelphia Insurance Company.
Correct. Again, it's in your packet, the resolution, this is to cover our underground storage tanks liability insurance that we have to get on a annual basis nowadays. So this is basically the same term, same parameters as previous years.
So at this point, we would entertain a motion to authorize, resolution 2020, the resolution authorizing the execution of a letter of credit for Midland Bank guaranteeing the payment to Philadelphia Insurance Company. Frank, and second by Mr. Stevens. Any questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And parking code cleanup.
You want me to handle that one, Brent? Okay. So as I said in my memo, Brent found us nafu in our parking code. As you know, the parking lot, which I believe is number five across the street and on the other side of the tracks, is available for down, well, any resident, but primarily downtown residents to park in during a snow emergency. Well, as written, and the way it works is they can park there during a snow emergency, and then they're supposed to move their car at the end of the snow emergency so that Public Works can plow that lot. Unfortunately, the way it's written, when we made that change, we forgot to, all right, I forgot to change one section. It provided that essentially from the moment the snow emergency ended, they had to have the car out of there. And that just isn't quite right. So proposing to do is fix it so it matches the other provisions with the code so that a vehicle that's parked in lot five between four hours after the end of the snow emergency, so they have four hours to move the car, up until eight hours, for the next eight hours, they have to stay out of lot five so they can plow it. It actually protects the residents, so it gives them a little more time to move their cars. So we'd recommend a motion to amend. Section 110-25 is set forth in your packet.
We have that motion. Mr. Porter and Mr. Flurry, and this is a second. And I do have a question. How do, how does anybody technically know the snow emergency is actually over, other than, you know, is it light snow, or is it got to be completely stopped? What's, what actually triggered that?
Basically, what we, the ordinance is over once the street is completely cleared curb to curb in front of your house. Technically, the snow emergency is over at that point. Otherwise, when we're done plowing, when we finish all our designated routes, it's taken down, the snow emergency is posted on the city's website, and we remove it when we're finished plowing as well.
Thank you.
But the critical thing for the residents to know is we just need to have the cars off the street when we're there plowing curb to curb. So once we go back all the way to the curb line, then basically we're done, we're not coming back.
Okay. Ms. Frank, did you have a question?
Yeah, thank you. Does, A, does that apply to the snow as well?
No, 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 that's just regular parking regulations.
Because I was wondering who works that shift from 2:00 to 6:00 in the morning?
Police officers.
That being said, any further discussion, comments? All those in favor of the motion as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Number three, building planning zoning unfinished business, we have none. Number four, building planning zoning new business, zoning planning update. I assume Ms. Gina Del Rose?
So there's no cases for this month, so you won't have them at City Council. Next month is questionable. Lot of pending cases, but always with the holidays, you know? It's not on the forethought. I am starting to get phone calls again from different attorneys wanting to check what's the next meeting, application deadline and stuff like that. So I do expect the cases to start picking up again. For December, obviously, we had Hometown Christmas, which was a success. I also was scheduled to go to a tourism conference two years ago that finally got held in Chicago. So I attended that with some other local people, hoping just to find tips to help with like Heritage Days, Hometown Christmas, stuff like that, which is part of my job now, but was thrown at me, and I'm still learning how to handle those. So it was, it was a good conference to attend. I did learn a lot of things. I may not have, I may not get to avoid TikTok much longer, unfortunately, because apparently that is where a lot of marketing is being driven to right now. But otherwise, zoning letters are still going. The department did finish their contract with the Village of Poplar Grove, so you won't be seeing that on the monthly reports anymore. That's the, the highlights.
Thank you, Ms. Del Rose. Any questions for Gina? All right, moving on, Building Department, Mr. Kip.
Thank you, Your Honor. For the month of December, we had 55 permits issued for a value of construction at 2.5 million. Five of those were commercial, 50 were residential, 11 of which were single-family homes, which brought our total for the year to 61. Some highlights, we do have plans on the table for Jimmy John's, which we had to keep secret for a while, and the Anderson Funeral Home Project is nearing completion. I'll entertain, any questions?
Anybody have anything? Yes, Ms. Mulholland.
61 new construction, single family for the year?
Correct. Thank you. Correct.
All right. Any further questions? All right, and then we're moving on to number five, fire station number one roof repair. Mr. Heiser.
Thank you, sir. As I reported last week, fire station number one had a, during that wind event that we had on December 15th, had some damage to it. We have Freeport Industrial Roofing willing to do the job. We have a price for it, and tonight I'm looking for, I believe, a motion to carry on with the process.
All right. Motion to approve the proposal from Freeport Industrial Roof, Inc. in the amount of $31,145 for the roof repair for fire station number one apparatus building.
And Mr. Chairman, I don't know if this was, was this part of, actually, this is a new bid, right? It's not being bid out?
Yeah, this, it's a new bid, yeah.
So I would suggest as a part of the motion, a motion to waive the bigger procedures that would appear next week separately on your agenda.
Should we include it in the motion?
You can't hear me.
Okay, so we would amend that as to include waiving the bidding process. Mr. Porter and Ms. Prather, any further discussion? Yes, Ms. Freeman.
Thank you. So Chief, was our insurance adjuster able to get out there?
Yes, last, last week Tuesday, he came out, and I'm still waiting for, still waiting for them to give us their findings, so.
Yes, Mr. Birken.
Thanks, Chairman Snow. So if we're still waiting on the insurance, shouldn't we maybe table this or hold off on this? Because I'm a bit confused, because we do have insurance, obviously, and so there's a deductible, right? What's the deductible?
$500.
$500. So why aren't we just paying $500?
Two aspects to that. Number one, the contracts with us and the, and the contractors. So that contract is always going to have the full amount of the contract. Whatever we get back from the insurance company is separate. It's different than your typical household where the insurance company pays the contractor directly. Classic example, I had my roof done after a hailstorm. My contract was with the contractor for the $18,000 that it was. Our insurance company actually paid them directly, but I had to have that contract for the $18,000. So that's what this is. I don't know that the insurance company is going to pay the full amount. I know they're out there, they have an initial, our cost estimate of something like $9,000 or $10,000.
Yeah, initially, it was $9,800 that they, but there was no guarantee that that roof would be leak proof.
So we're negotiating with the insurance company, trying to get them to pay more. But the reality is with the condition of the roof, they need to do the whole thing, not just patch it. So it's going to be a question of whether or not we can get the insurance company to agree that they should cover the whole roof or just the patch job.
And I think we need to move, because can't, this is, this needs to be done, this can't wait. This is not like planting trees where we can just hold off.
That's correct. This is, basically, this is an emergency. If we have any extreme weather come in, then we're, we're going to be probably having a lot of water damage inside of our bedroom at Station One.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments? That being said, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, motion moves forward. B, American Red Cross Plan Act Fund. Sorry, Rescue Plan, sorry. I apologize. Ms. Shannon, I believe?
These are just additional funds. What it is, is the distribution of unclaimed funds. So this is in addition to the 3.4 million, we'll get over two years.
Thank you. So we would entertain a motion to accept that? Mr. Flurry and Ms. Mulholland, any further questions or comments? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right. Request for proposal for audit service, Ms. Hanson?
So you have in your packet, we did send out six packets and four came back, and you've got a breakdown of the four requests that we received, and Sickich, LLP, who is actually, has been the city's auditors for the past three years, did come in at low bid.
Okay, we would entertain a motion to retain Schlickit for the 116,855. All those, so I need a motion, sorry. Ms. Prather and Porter, any further discussion on this matter? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And next is the cleaning contract. I'm assuming Mr. Drell or Ms.?
Ms. Hanson.
What's that?
Shannon.
Shannon, okay. I don't know why I thought that.
Yeah, so the contract for City Hall Cleaning expired at the end of last year. It was with Morgan Building Maintenance, who did submit another one-year contract, and the only increase is attributable to the change in the federal minimum wage.
All right. We would entertain a motion to the effect of the monthly fee of $1,004. Mr. Stevens and Mr. McGee, and any questions, discussion? Yes, Ms. Frank.
Thank you. Do we have any other janitorials, um, cleaning services that maybe could, we could bid? Or is this just one person in town that does this?
I honestly don't know how many cleaning services are in town. I mean, if that, that is something that you want to go out to do in our people, we can, but...
There used to be Schmidt Janitorial. I was just wondering, you know, there's a lot of things that they're doing.
We do contract with a different service for the cleaning of the windows, I believe.
Did have Schmidt at one time, and then he passed the business on to someone else. And we used him for a period of time, but we had to let him go for reasons. We can talk about later.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Prather.
Have you had any issues with Morgan Building Services?
We have not had any with Morgan, no.
All right, any further discussions or comments, questions? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Um, next is the appointment of John Wolf as a trustee to the Northern Illinois Land Bank. Did anybody have anything particular staff-wise for that particular deal? Um, I believe he's the current person, correct?
That's correct.
All right. So at this point, we would entertain a motion to reappoint John Wolf as the trustee to the Northern Illinois Bank to represent the city of Belvidere. Ms. Moho and Mr. Flurry? Any questions on this matter? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And then we have Ocean, OSHA mandate. And this looks like Mr. Drell.
It is, and this is, I hope now possibly where the meeting comes to a screeching slowdown. So, obviously, a topic of great angst amongst the country and, and the state and our local area. As most of you know, President Biden directed OSHA, the Federal OSHA Organization, to adopt regulations requiring a vaccination of employees in employers, actually, it's regulation employers, with more than a hundred employees to implement a vaccine mandate. Basically, if you want to work in a, in an establishment with more than a hundred employees, you have to be vaccinated and fully vaccinated, whatever that means next week. The one exception, and what they put in there to try and avoid some of the litigation that they're seeing spouting around the country, was an employer may, instead of requiring everybody to become vaccinated, implement a vaccinate or test and wear a mask policy. So you're either fully vaccinated, or you have to test weekly, give a proof of that negative COVID test to the employer, and you must wear a work, a mask. I'm sorry, work indoors. If you work outdoors, you don't have to, but indoors, you have to wear a mask. Or if you're around other people, obviously, you're working from home, you don't have to do that. OSHA does not have authority over the city of Belvidere. OSHA only applies to the private sector. States may become what are called OSHA Plan States, which Illinois has done. Which means rather than federal OSHA running around and enforcing on everybody, the state OSHA does that. The state of Illinois has applied OSHA to all municipalities within the state of Illinois. So, because of that role from the state, we are bound by the OSHA regulations. I checked with the state. They are currently planning on starting to enforce the OSHA regulations on January twenty-fourth of this year. Obviously, as you all know, there's some significant litigation that came out of this. Uh, the district court had stayed the effective date of the OSHA mandate pending litigation. That stay of the mandate went up to the Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals, and they vacated that stay, effectively putting the OSHA mandate back in place. The plaintiffs have appealed that stay of the mandate, that temporary, you're not going to go forward until we figure this out, to the United States Supreme Court. That court heard arguments on Friday. That's two hours of my life I will not get back. I listened to it. It was painful. They have not made a decision yet. If I have to guess, they don't, they don't put the stay in place. They'll just leave it, they'll leave the, the regulation in place until they decide on the merits. That's my guess. But because we have a January twenty-fourth do or die date from the state, what we did is we drafted a policy that's based upon the federal, uh, policy, their, their model policy, for lack of a better word. It's heavily based upon that. I did change some things. So that we would have a vaccinate or test and mask policy. Obviously, Mayor Morse is not here. He's listening. But I don't think I'm putting words in his mouth to say that he would not support mandating all employees to get a vaccine. That would be a personal decision. That being said, because of the OSHA regulation that will be implemented through the state of Illinois, we don't have to either require vaccination or testing and wear a mask at work. So what I drafted is that model policy, which is in your packets. The concept is if we approve that, we approve it by a resolution that will provide, I said my memo, it's only effective so long as the OSHA regulation is effective. Meaning, if they repeal it, it goes away right away. If a court finds it unconstitutional or unenforceable for any other reason, it goes away right away. If a court implements a stay of its enforcement while they litigate it, it goes away until that stay is lifted. I'll be frank.
That may be true.
But by then, they've already had been vaccinated. You can undo that.
We're not requiring vaccination. This policy does not require vaccination. That's the whole purpose of doing it this way. If an employee is vaccinated, they do not have to test?
Okay, so the other question is, will the unvaccinated people have to wear masks?
Yes.
So every, I mean, with the vaccinated?
No.
Well, then it's discriminatory.
But it comply, if you want to require all employees to wear a mask, we could certainly draft policy to do so. But that is not required by other federal, state OSHA.
Mr. Birkin.
Thanks, Chairman Snow. So I'm going to say thanks, but no thanks on anything to do with any of this. Um, I don't think anybody should have to wear a mask. I don't think anybody should have a vaccine. I think this whole thing, I could go on and on about how ridiculous. What planet am I living on anymore? I oppose anything to do with this and don't want anything in the city code book on this.
Okay, at this point, um, for further discussion, since Mr. Drell has spelled out most of the highlights, which is basically either the vaccination or the weekly testing and wearing the mask of those people who are not vaccinated while indoors or around people. We would entertain a motion so we can discuss in order to...
And, Mr. Chairman, if I can, as you know, the governor had previously passed an executive order applicable only to essentially healthcare workers, including our paramedics. There was a similar vaccinated or test policy. Um, the executive order has some teeth to it. They might not give you grants or something like that. A violation of an OSHA regulation carries a fine between a thousand and ten thousand dollars for each occurrence. And I don't know how they're going to affect that. Is it going to be a ten thousand dollar fine because you don't have a policy? Or it'll be a ten thousand dollar fine because you don't have a policy? A ten thousand dollar fine because Mike Drell is not vaccinated, not wearing his mask? Is it going to be another ten thousand dollar fine because? I don't know how they're going to go about that. I do know that OSHA historically is, is pretty aggressive in looking for violations of other types of things.
Okay, for the purpose of moving and discussing this further, we do need a motion. Mr. Stevens and Mrs. Prather? That being said, um, I'm going to ask Mr. Drell, is there any reason we can't table this? And just keep postponing it as a tabled item?
So that obviously is at the discretion of the committee. As I said, there's a January twenty-fourth effective date on the Illinois implementation of the OSHA mandate. And that gives you one city council meeting between now and then to get that done. If there's a stay, it doesn't matter. If there's not a stay, that would mean if it's tabled tonight, that as of January twenty-fourth, you would not have a policy in place. And you would technically be in violation of the state's OSHA mandate. I can guarantee there's going to be a lot of other municipalities in that boat. Some have already done it. Some cities have actually required every single employee to be vaccinated, period. And they did that before the OSHA mandate went into effect. Some cities are ignoring it. I cannot legally advise you to ignore something that has not been struck and done by, struck and done by the courts yet. I cannot tell you to put the city in position of incurring those fines. Do I think OSHA is going to come out the Monday afterwards and come after us? I don't think they would. That'd be kind of a mean thing to do, but I'm at OSHA. I can't promise you that. So that's why it's on the agenda tonight. One, we want to get you talking about it and make sure you understood what was going on and where we're at with it and look at this policy. And hopefully have it implemented if needed before the mandate goes into effect.
So I guess my question to you is, um, just like, as it pertains to companies having this, they don't have to adopt a policy that gets voted on. Do we actually, if this is part of the regulation, do we really have to adopt a policy or just comply as they come snooping and looking for evidence or procedures?
So...
Just because we have a policy...
I don't, I tend to say some things I probably shouldn't say. As you know, it appears that part of the goal is to gain as close to a hundred percent vaccination rates as possible by the federal government. But they can't go out and tell everybody to vaccinate. So how do they do that? They go after the employers. OSHA controls employers, not employees. They're not going to find the employee for not being vaccinated or not wearing a mask. They're going to find the employer for doing that. So the mandate is employers shall adopt a policy if they don't require a hundred percent vaccination. So we're required by I OSHA, Illinois OSHA, as through the, or Federal OSHA through I OSHA, to adopt a policy.
Okay, so we're technically required to...
We're required to adopt a policy if we don't want to require one hundred percent vaccination, which of course itself be a policy. We do occasionally, in, in individual departments, adopt policies at the administrative level. And don't necessarily go to council to get that. But this is a policy that's going to affect every single employee in the city of Belvidere. And I also want OSHA to see a record that the council acted to adopt the policy. So they come in and say, do you have a policy? And say, yes, this is when the council adopted it. Don't find me.
Ms. Moho.
So the policy, though, they're not really giving us a choice on what policy we choose to implement. It has to be vaccine or test and mask? Can't be, don't come to work if you're sick?
No, that is correct. They're giving you two choices. You can require one hundred percent vaccination or you can require vaccination plus test and mask.
Ms. Frank.
This really bothers me. Um, our forefathers fought for our freedom. And now we're just going to, just let them take it away from us. I just think this is really wrong. And there's two cities that have done away with it. And one was, um, St. Charles, and the other one... Orland Park. I mean, I just think we need to stick a stand and be strong and not cave.
Mr. Birkin, did you? Yes.
No, I'm just flying off the cuff here. Totally agree with Ms. Frank. I, we don't, if this came across my desk, it'd go right in the trash can.
Mr. Porter.
I guess the only wrinkle in that is if we do get fined ten thousand dollars, that's taxpayer money that we're going to find too, so we have to keep that in mind.
Mr. Birkin.
Thanks for continuing to call on me. You know, it's just, we've been through this, it seems like, with so many entities. You know, about the library, they were going to sue us. Uh, you know, nothing ever happens. You know, I say we band together with the other cities that are standing up to this and let them come after all of us as a cohesive unit.
Anybody else? Ms. Freeman.
I'm sorry, I one hundred percent disagree. I am one hundred percent a believer in science. And I wish to God everybody was and would get vaccinated. But for those who don't, um, it's only right to, at the very least, wear a mask. It's not that big a deal.
Mr. Birkin.
Think this could possibly be my last comment, but I just think if you turn off the television, you'll be just fine.
Likewise.
Ms. Frank.
I just want to say too, you can get COVID when you're vaccinated. And I know many friends of mine that have gotten COVID after being vaccinated. It's not a sure-all. I think more people would step in line if they saw that this was a for-sure thing, like, oh, it's helping. But read about the Holocaust. This is happening.
Mr. Porter, did you have a comment?
Well, I guess, well, one comment to Wendy is, my understanding is that ninety-five percent of the people that are in hospitals are unvaccinated. You know, and you can get it if you're vaccinated, but you don't get, get it bad enough to get in the hospital. But my question would be, if they require vaccinations and a person dies from the vaccination, which has happened, who is responsible for that then?
It's a question to you as far as mandating an employee.
Let's, let's narrow the focus a little bit. First of all, we are not mandating vaccination. The administration directed me to draft a policy that does not require vaccination. The only problem is, then, to comply with OSHA, we have to have the test and mask. And at the risk of throwing more wood on the fire, the surprising question I haven't heard yet is, who pays for the tests? Sorry, I'm a flurry. Under OSHA, it's the employee. Interestingly, that raises the question, wait a second, we've got all these union employees and you're putting a new work condition on them, I'll say it's a work condition at least, because it's new policy, and they're going to want to negotiate, at the very least, the impact of that. The federal Department of Labor, Illinois has its own that we're subject to, but they follow federal, just like OSHA does, has their, their attorney, their general, their lead attorney has already run into the opinion that a governmental regulation is not a mandatory subject of bargaining. If OSHA comes in and says you will require masks or you will require vaccines, they can't make us negotiate implementing that policy. What we might be required to do is negotiate the impact of that policy, meaning likely we'll be paying for the, for the tests. The policy is drafted, has us providing tests if we can get them for free. Otherwise, it puts the cost, if there is any, on the employer. As you know, there are free tests available and you can get them around the community. And to make life as easy as we can for the employees, it's not required by the feds by including the policy, that we will give each employee at least a half an hour of work time during their work shift to go get the test, if needed. So they can run over to, I think Sicko's doing them, or whoever, whoever else is doing a free test in the community to get that test. Alternatively, we may want to go out and buy a bunch of tests on our own to have them available for the employees to use. Uh, what's pretty clear is they cannot go out and buy their own home tests at Walgreens. I know I've done that in the past. And, and use those unless they video-record themselves doing it and give that to us so we can prove they actually did it, which is kind of crazy. So, um, that is in the policy, though it's, right now, the, the cost is on them, but we will probably want to consider, uh, using some of our COVID money that we've been granted to obtain some tests so that employees that don't vaccinate can test at work.
So my question is, if somebody were to table this now, does that table it until the next committee or a month from now? Or can we table it?
You can table it to the next committee if you wish to.
And, but that pushes us out of the timeframe to bring it to a full council meeting in time. Is that correct?
That would bring you, um...
I don't have a calendar in front of me, so I'm not...
You're right. You, you would not make the, the January twenty-fourth date. And I should never admit this, but as I, we were sitting here, I heard all this Frank discussion in St. Charles. I was trying to quickly search and see what they had done. I didn't find that. I didn't find that, but I did find that apparently the Illinois Department of Labor has formally adopted all the federal rules at this point. And so, they're still slated to go into effect January twenty-fourth.
So, at this point, we could move this forward if it gets a yea vote and table it at the next council meeting and potentially have it show up on, as a special city council at the end of the next committee meeting, two weeks from now?
If you had to do that, yes, you could. And frankly, I'm hoping the Supreme Court rules this week on their stay. Because nothing requires them to, but I'm hoping they do. They understand the time sensitivity of this. And if we get to city council next week and they've stayed the effect of the mandate, you simply table at that point or vote it down with relief to bring it back to committee if it comes back in the future.
Ms. Moho?
Do we the motion right now?
Yes, Stevens and Prather went ahead so we could discuss it. Mr. Anderson?
Is the motion to adopt, what is the motion?
It's to adopt it as is right now, presented by the mayor or the attorney. Mr. Anderson?
Yep. That's correct.
But it wouldn't be in time for the mandate? Correct?
If you were to table it this evening, I would recommend tabling to the January twenty-fourth committee, the whole meeting.
I'll make that motion to table to the January twenty-fourth. Seconded by Ms. Moho. Although, or any discussion? Go ahead, Ms. Freeman.
So, I'm not sure what tabling it is going to do because I think people are either one way or the other. And I don't think that tabling or discussion is going to change anybody's mind here. So, what, what is the purpose of that?
I, I think at this point, since the mayor is running the ship as far as the city and dealing with the rest of the employees and the entity, being the top dog, I think it's best that he have the flexibility and/or bring it before us and make his case for or against. Since he's not here, I think that would, and that gives everybody more time. It also gives the courts more time as to us adopting something that regardless gets, goes into effect. That's my thought. It was the fifth Monday. Any further discussion, question? Mr. Breerton?
Well, I will be supporting to table this tonight, but if it were up to me, I'd shoot this thing down altogether. Because once this thing is on the books, you, I just see it, this thing, it's like never going away. So, you come back with more amendments after amendment, and then it's going to be thrown in our face. Well, you guys approved it, you approved it. So, I would shoot this thing down altogether, and that's just my opinion.
Any further questions, comments, discussion? All right, so the motion on the floor is to table the original motion, which would be to adopt the OSHA mandate. Oh, we'll do a roll call for that.
Flurry?
This is to table it?
Yes.
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Moho?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
No.
Breerton?
Yes.
Nine in favor?
And Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, but I don't know if your original motion stated, were you tabling to the January twenty-fourth meeting specifically?
Yes. Okay, that being said, my understanding is now we're going to go into executive session? Or is that something we want to wait for the mayor to be here for that discussion?
Nope, I discussed it with him. He said we could go ahead and at least start it tonight, and then if we need him, we can always bring it back again in a week or two. It'd be appropriate to entertain a motion to go into executive session, discuss collective bargaining pursuant to Section 2C2 of the Open Meetings Act.
I'd entertain a motion to that effect. Ms. Prather and Ms. Moho? All, then we'll do a roll call?
Yep.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Moho?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Breerton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
All right, we're going to clear the room. Can you, anybody who needs to stay, Mr. Drell, as far as staff?
I think it'd be appropriate to have Ms. Shannon, Ms. Shannon, Ms. Hanson stay. If you give me a moment, I'll try and get us off of TV.